Alright, everybody, I think Molly's good to go to livestream. So, we're gonna get started. Thanks.
Alright, thank you, everyone. I'm calling to order this special board meeting of the Collingswood Board of Education for Wednesday, July 17th, 2024. Appropriate notice has been advertised. Call to order, please.
Mr. Chu?
Here.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Mrs. Maya?
Here.
Mrs. McColsky? Mrs. Savarino?
Here.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Here.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Here.
Mr. Tabey?
Here.
Mrs. Kayden?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started this evening, I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge two significant losses to our community last week. Diane Sylafont, a Collingswood resident and the heart and soul of Oakland Public School. For 35 years, she was the secretary there. Passed away as well as Joanne Rangion, retired Garfield Elementary Nurse. And we wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the tremendous amount of work and love and care that both of those women poured into our Collingswood and Oakland community. That being said, we're gonna transition over to what we're here for tonight. It's a little bit of a different flow because there is only one item on our agenda this evening. So, before we get started with public comment, I did wanna just take a moment to explain what is actually on the agenda for this evening. So, we will be voting on a resolution to authorize the submission of specifically the bond proposal question. Some have asked us about why it's phrased the way it is, and we wanted to clarify a little bit of that before we got started. We consulted this, all of this is done through a bond attorney who specializes in these sorts of things much more than any of us that are sitting up here today. It is important for the question to be very specific about what it is that we are going to the community to ask them for and not contain extraneous details that don't specifically, that are not specifically something that the community has the ability to vote yes or no on. Everybody is entitled to their opinion on all of it. That is for sure the truth. However, what you're specifically voting on has to do with the money that we are asking you to go into your taxes and that we are using those money for the specific facilities related to Good Shepherd, the renovations to the Zane North School Building and the athletic facilities behind the high school here. The other information, it isn't that it's being hidden. It's that those are not things like the closing of Sharp and Garfield Elementary School. Those are not things that the community can vote yes or no on. Those are board actions that will be taken if and when a bond proposal question passes. So, that is the reason for that. It doesn't mean that we are trying to hide anything. We are being very transparent about what the effects of this referendum are, what the impact of it will be. We will continue to be very clear about what all of that is in all of our communications going forward, in referendum roundtables we'll be having, in any materials that are dispersed. It is a consequence of the referendum. It's the way that we are able to purchase the building. However, it isn't an action that the public votes yes or no on. So, if you are looking at the agenda, the bond proposal question is two paragraphs. Then, the rest of that, where it says, "Do you approve this bond proposal question", is all things that the board needs to vote about that give our board's secretary, business administrator, Mr. Garrison, our architect, and all the different nuts and bolts of how this referendum comes to pass. Do I have all of that part correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, that is what is on the agenda for voting tonight. So, with that being said, we are at our opportunity, our first opportunity for public comment. The purpose for this public comment section is to discuss items listed on the agenda. So, at the moment, that is specifically any items, anything that you would like to make public comment about that has to do with the bond referendum. Anything else is to be saved, excuse me, for the second public comment section. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members and administrators. The intent of public comment is to give the community the opportunity to provide feedback to the board. We will be actively listening and taking notes so that we can take all that is being said into consideration. If appropriate clarifying comments may be made at the end of the public comment section, for more detailed responses to concerns, communication may go out later in the week by the appropriate staff members or administrators or be discussed by the board during future committee meetings. Members of the public are welcome to speak and expected to do so with the utmost sensitivity for everyone in attendance. And in fairness to all who wish to speak, there's a strict three-minute time limit. Ms. Coleman has her timer that is loud enough that you can usually, when you're up here, you'll hear it start to ding to give you the heads up. So, three-minute time limit per person for public comment. Please come to the microphone, stand, and state your name and address for the record.
Wayne Rossi, 114 East Palmer Ave. I'm a big believer, and I have been for years before this proposal started, that Collingswood needs to have grade-level schools. I feel that this is a significant equity issue as I feel that neighborhood schools have unfortunately reinforced residential segregation. They have not been sufficiently inclusive and that we've watched the schools get older and older and not frankly the kind of facilities that are necessary for modern education experience for the children of our schools. I think it's very unfortunate that a lot of the discussion hasn't really focused on kids and what they need and how and we can make sure that the plans that are going forward are focused on all Collingswood students. It's, you know, there's been way too much, in my opinion, us versus them mentality when this is meant to be about the only investment we can make, as far as I understand it, that will invest in all of our students. And I think that being able to take that step and to make that investment is deeply important. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jean Rossi, 114 East Palmer Ave. I wanted to thank Ms. Coleman, specifically about the responsiveness of my recent Oprah requests, and looking forward to getting more information. I recently held a survey, which was open to anybody who was at conversations or by word of mouth to participate in regards to this bond referendum. It's a complex issue with a lot of things going on at the same time. But I'm hoping with the conversation that's coming up this upcoming Tuesday over at the Community Center around inclusion and inclusive schools, we'll be hitting on the district's goals for DEI, including ADA accessibility for the buildings as well as staff to support the students within those buildings for existing 504 plans and IEPs. I'm hoping we can have some further discussions, specifically around the specifics on the improvements to the fields. Some people are very concerned about the artificial turf. More on the long-term goals for the Sharp and Garfield buildings and those communities and for safe routes to school. I know that is gonna be a very complex issue involving the borough and the county. So, there's a group of people who are very engaged and wanna make sure that our kids are getting to and from school safely. So, and also maybe some more discussions around shared services for things like programs and resources with our recent budget crisis that we've landed ourselves into and, you know, some previous people in government have helped us get to. But we're hoping that we can make sure that our kids are still kinda getting what we were expecting for them to get when we moved to Collingswood and got our families involved with the Collingswood Public School District. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good evening, Gretchen Klucki, 920 Grant Ave, Collingswood. I just had a question because I was online looking at the agenda as well. Would, will there be, it cuts off the question even when you go landscape. Is there a way to get the full, because it kinda cuts off half the words and half the words just so we can see all of it?
Yeah, like online, everything's perfect, but...
No, it's not. I tried to read it online on one side. On one side, you can read it. On the other, you can't. Thank you.
I'm too short for this. Hi, Becky Sieg, 1030 Grant Ave. I have two kids at Sharp, a rising second grader and a preschooler. First and foremost, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak before an important vote this evening. There is a lot in this referendum that as a parent I love from investing in our facilities and really integrating our students at a younger age. I really desperately want to support that for our town. However, since the referendum's been made public, the last several months, I've seen an increase in division among members of our town. I've elevated these concerns in meetings with school board members and district leaders. And honestly, the divisions persist and worsen, whether it's whispers about secret meetings that happened prior to the referendum going public to build support or adults, including adults in this room, who are talking about those kids at Sharp and how a charter school may finally come in and help them learn, or our entire school community not having a chance to weigh in on the closure of our school before the proposal was finalized. These are very real issues that concern me. I'm proud to be a Sharp parent. I love our school community. I am proud that my kids are in a genuinely diverse classroom setting and that they enjoy learning with one another, where we have rising second graders who are eager to come back to school in the evenings and play spelling games and math games with each other. That is directly because of the community they have and the teachers who are there to support them. I know we can do better. I know that Sharp, our test scores, which I hear in these meetings often, we can improve. But our kids are genuinely making growth. Our kids are learning with one another. They're finding joy and they are progressing. To take that away and to stifle that and dismantle this community while our kids are growing is something I don't think that we should be doing as a community. And please don't mistake, I want us to have integration among our elementary schools. We desperately need it, but we cannot do this at the expense of an entire school community that is making progress. So, my ask is twofold. Please delay this vote and this referendum and then please come back to the design drawing board and bring our community in so you can do this with us and not to us. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Brenda Borkowski. I live at 106 Harvard Ave. I am here to speak in favor of the referendum. I'd like to speak kind of to a similar point to what the previous speaker mentioned, which is how divisive this topic has become in our community. I have seen two very different, very passionate schools of thought around the issue and around the plan. And I've seen a lot of people getting very heated, very emotional. And I think that's okay. I think it's a very emotional issue because it's a really big change that affects our kids. So, of course, there's gonna be emotions around kids. But what I wish that folks would take a step back and look at a little bit more broadly is the idea that this referendum can heal division in our town, that this referendum brings everybody together. It takes us a step away from micro neighborhoods and micro schools. It actually addresses the very problem that's become apparent in the community discussion around the topic of the referendum. I think that our town is too small to be divided into such small pieces. And I see those pieces fighting with each other right now. And that's not doing the kids any favors. So, I'd really like to everybody consider that the problem that you're feeling, the reason that you're so maybe uncomfortable even talking about the referendum with your friends and neighbors, is that it's divisive and that it's that division the plan is trying to address. I also would like to talk about the idea of plans for the future or change being labeled as divisive as a tool to stop progress. I think a lot of very progressive ideas through human history have been labeled divisive when in fact they were progress toward a more just and equitable future. Thank you.
Hola, buenas noches. Me llamo Julie Schneider y vivo en 819 McGill Ave. Estoy aquí para representar a los hispanohablantes de Collingswood. Mucho de ellos de pronto ni saben de este plan y ese referendum. La mayoría de los hispanohablantes de Collingswood asisten las escuelas de Garfield y Sharp. Me preocupa porque la información no se ha difundido en español. Los hispanohablantes de Collingswood no asisten las reuniones del Board of Education. Ellos no entienden lo que dicen en las reuniones de Board of Education. Y todo lo que se ha difundido ha sido en versión electrónico. En Sharp, nosotros difundimos información en papeles, en folletos, para que la gente lea ahí. Pero yo no he vido intento del distrito de difundir la información a la gente que les va a afectar. Y me preocupa mucho. And I can translate to English because I can. But hopefully, what you understand is I'm very concerned. And I would like to represent that many Spanish-speaking and only Spanish-speaking members of Collingswood might not know about this plan and might be directly affected by this plan. And I haven't seen an effort by the district, especially because everything has been electronic. The PowerPoint that's very well done cannot be translated even on the computer. So, I would hope that there would be some information that would go out by paper because again, Sharp, which we understand our community, we don't send things out only by email because a lot of families prefer paper. So, there are a lot of things the district could do to get that information out, both in English and Spanish. And this has started in April, and I haven't seen that happen. And this is a genuine concern because regardless of my belief on the referendum, I think everyone should have a right to have an opinion on the referendum. And I don't think that's happening right now. And again, the families that are most affected that are, you know, that go to Sharp and Garfield might not know that in a few years, those schools might not be available to them. And they might, they might like the plan, but they, we don't know. I think there's gotta be some improvement in that area. So, I hope you will take that to heart.
Ms. Wilson, I live on 109 East Franklin Ave in Collingswood. I have a rising seventh grader at the middle school and I have a rising fourth grader at Newby. You say your goal is to increase equity and diversity, to improve the quality of education and access to opportunities for all our kids. Let me be clear, I am very on board with these goals. What I am not on board with is closing a thriving school in the middle of the neighborhood you claim to be helping, the school that actually has more diversity than any other elementary school in Collingswood. I've heard all your reasons for closing Sharp and I can't help but feel that you're choosing the financial bottom line over what is actually best for our kids. You can show me all the architectural drawings and spreadsheets you want. At the end of the day, what you're doing is closing the most diverse school in Collingswood and putting the money into the wealthiest and whitest part of town. How a group that claims to be led by progressive values, supposedly striving for racial equality, can claim this is the best plan is beyond me. I'm a proud liberal, a progressive liberal, and being told that opposing this plan means I'm quote "pro-segregation" is ludicrous. Some of your supporters have said this online. The goals of this plan are great. The execution of this plan is utter trash. You have wonderful elaborate drawings of the new sports complex, but no one ever bothered to do something as simple as counting the classrooms in Newby to see if they could accommodate your plan. Spoiler alert, they cannot. I'm still waiting to hear how we're gonna fit eight classes into six classrooms. Sharp is going to be left empty until TBD? Community center that we have no funding for? Who knows? Maybe we can sell Garfield and use a little of that money to bus kids? Who knows? There are holes in this plan big enough to drive a Mack truck through. Being against the plan is not the same as being against the goals. I demand a better plan, one that takes community feedback seriously, one that listens to everyone, not just those who already agree, one that puts kids and teachers over the financial bottom line. Your job is to convince us that this plan makes sense. This requires communication, active listening, willingness to be flexible, and above all, transparency. You have failed to do your job. Stop gaslighting us and telling us that what we see happening in this district isn't really happening. Saying you want equity while closing the school with the most black and brown kids, saying you want equity while making those kids go farther to get to a predominantly white school, saying you can't afford to keep your schools adequately staffed while taking raises yourselves, saying you can't afford to pay teachers while leasing a huge building at $71,000 per year, a building you're hoping to buy one day but in the meantime are using it as your offices while most of it sits unused. Meanwhile, we're losing arts programs, music, electives, fundamental high school courses, and stretching teachers to the breaking point, telling them to do quote "more with less". I think YAL needs to be doing more with less. Stop kicking the can down the road because guess where that can lands? Right on our kids. How can you expect people to trust you with millions more dollars when you've so badly mismanaged the money you already have? The most heartbreaking thing is that when this fails, we're going to have to wait another six years before we can hope to access this funding again.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Obviously, we need the money and because of the low and poor planning, our kids are once again missing out.
Hi, my name is Liz Young. I live at 158 New Jersey Ave. I did reach out with some of these earlier and I applaud you, Beth Anne, for getting back to me very promptly. Some of the responses were described earlier, but they just require some more clarification. First of all, I ask if there's any way to make notifications for meetings such as tonight's more readily available to the community as a whole. I understand that legally, all that is required is posting them at the schools and in the newspaper, which I should add, based on our previous person, is only provided in English. But that does not adequately reach all members of the community, such as those without school-age children or unable to have paid subscriptions to local newspapers or those of us who are not taking their kids to school during the summer. Secondly, it needs to be made abundantly clear that once approved, there can be no changes made to this question. It also needs to be made abundantly clear to the public that Garfield and Sharp will be closed if the referendum is voted yes. This is not currently included in the verbiage of the question. It makes the question misleading to uninformed voters. I understand that legally, closing, selling, or repurposing school buildings does not need to be put out for public vote. But I think this is an important component of the referendum that is purposefully being left out. Is this where we are? We only do what is legally required and don't take the extra step to ensure that information is equitably distributed to our community as a whole? Speaking of all the information, at previous info sessions, I've heard it touted how the Architective Record did great work for our last referendum approximately in 2006. However, some people here, myself included, may recall the last referendum vote in 2018 in which Garrison Architects proposed a new sports field tied to several other building upgrades resulting in just $13 million in costs. This referendum was voted no and because of the wording of the question, the stadium, a 1936 WPA-funded project, was torn down with small metal bleachers provided in its place. Now, we are once again given an opportunity to improve our sports facilities tied to additional questionable facility upgrades, bringing the total cost to $44.5 million. Additionally, I understand that the referendum includes closing Sharp and Garfield in order to increase the need for additional seats. Has the board considered the two large multifamily housing units that the borough has currently announced? Across two locations, a total of 120 apartment units are to be built. That does not include the 60 units that are slated to be senior housing. Has the board considered removing fourth and fifth grade classes from our current buildings and utilizing those existing classrooms as much-needed resource teacher space, library space, space for art, language, and therapies? Given the current methods of informing the community, or lack thereof, as well as management of current budgetary funds, you are asking a lot of residents to simply trust you with $44.5 million and no succinct plan in place.
Priscina Seholster, 120 Pacific Ave, Collingswood. It's funny because I had thought I had a plan about what to say. But then I got in here and I looked around and my daughter...
Ma'am, I need you to speak into the microphone. Otherwise, they won't be able to hear you in the livestream.
My daughter spent years in this building with the marching band, tossing flags. I supported her and the entire situation. It's not about the band, essentially. It's also about the way the district is displacing funds, okay? So, how can we do better? Like, it's very personal for me. My suggestion is that we change things to a point where parenting is about more support. Teaching is about more support. I'm back teaching in the district and the district has supported me in a ridiculous way, as we all know. So, I just wanna thank you and she's now thriving because of the music department. So, please, let's keep it going, okay? Thank you.
Hey, I'm Megan Descent, 220 Woodland Terrace. And I just wanted to come up and thank you all for doing the really hard work of making hard decisions and hard choices and coming up with a plan and a vision for our kids and our town and our community to build and solve some of the problems that we're struggling with right now and set us up to be able to continue to grow into the future. I think right now, we have, as everybody knows, a lot of teeny-tiny towns spreading resources way too thin all over Collingswood, which is a teeny, excuse me, teeny-tiny schools in our teeny-tiny town. And I think this plan creates a new, modern school building for our fourth and fifth grade students to bring them together sooner and build more of a cohesive community. I think it puts them in a new, modern building with more resources. It also allows for a much more inclusive school environment, not only in fourth and fifth grade, but K-3 as well because there will be more students together. So, I'm really excited about this vision and this future for our town. I'm really excited about having more and better improved recreational space and facilities. And I'm also excited about the efficiencies of scale that this plan will create because we'll be able to concentrate resources and do things more efficiently and give our kids more of what they need to grow and thrive and learn, no matter what that is. So, thank you and I'm excited for this future.
Hello, I'm Flora Letz-Valez, 728 Belmont Ave. And I recently graduated Collingswood High School, this building, this year. And whether, right now, we're talking about the referendum. And from what I read from the paper, it's all about construction work, taking down old buildings, building up new ones. And whether or not you think that is a good idea, I feel as though that is not the most urgent issue all of our schools are facing. Because right now, we're losing key staff members in all sorts of areas, teachers, like school counselors, translators. Like, in my high school alone, I know we had to recruit some students to help translate because kids couldn't like do their classwork, alright? And instead of putting money into construction work, I feel like we need to focus on the essentials that we are lacking, which is more teachers and just more staff members in general. Because how can any school function, new building or not, without any staff to run it?
Good evening. My name is Claudia Bietren. I live on 21 Gorman Ave. Flora just gave me the right prop for this conversation because this is what we were supposed to be looking at tonight. Not a bond referendum for buildings. We should be looking at a budget referendum for teachers, for programs. So, you all know, because you received my letters, I hope all of you received my letters, proposing that we look at what other communities have done and we know... proposing that we look at what other communities have done, and we know that New Jersey has done in multiple municipalities, I will suggest, you take a look again at Robbinsville, Monroe Township, Westfield, communities that went through the same challenges that we did, that we are going, but they found creative ways to get a budget referendum going, so that they could, this year, '24, '25, increase their taxes. Nobody likes to pay higher taxes, but I bet this room would pay higher taxes for teachers, for programs. So, I think it's really disappointing, because I did ask this question several times through several letters. I did receive response at times, and I appreciate, Beth, your responsiveness, but it's not about the staff, it's about the board. And this board is not responsive. So, in a very nice way, I would say, get your act together, because we should be approving a budget referendum tonight.
Good evening. Keisha Butler-Thomas, 101 West Browning Road. I stand before you all today to discuss a crucial and often most overlooked issue, and that's the true narrative of the black and brown community. See, this story, it's not linear. It's actually vast and multifaceted. Each person carries a unique set of experiences, dreams, challenges, forming a really rich tapestry that can't be confined to a single narrative, yet, take a look around the room behind me. Despite the significant number of black and brown children impacted by this referendum, their representation is glaringly absent. Although the ones most affected live in those towers, which we have coined West Collingswood or O8107. And this gap underscores a critical flaw in the approach to equity and inclusion, because those are the words that we are using. So equity is actually not achieved by dictating policies from the top down. It can't be imposed. True equity arises from inclusion, participatory processes that involve those most affected by the decisions being made, and diversity isn't achieved by the older children from one place to another. And, during our debate, during our debate, we're seeing divorces that are often marginalized and creating spaces where every child can see themselves reflected and valued. In order to do this, I offer you this: active engagement. And showing the black and brown communities are not just present, but are actively involved in the decision-making processes. How about some representation? Having diverse voices at every level of leadership, so that policies reflect the lived experiences of all communities. What about investment? Investing all the resources and opportunities that empower black and brown children, and setting that they have access to quality education, healthcare, and social support. And last but not least, accountability, holding ourselves accountable as neighbors. Accountable to the institutions who are creating and maintaining environments where diversity and inclusion are not just goals, but actual realities. Let's call it to a future where every child, regardless of their background, can truly thrive and succeed together, which will build a society that truly embodies the principles of equity and diversity if we actually mean it and don't just say it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rob Carlson, 21 Gorman Avenue. A referendum is about trust. That's what you're asking. You are asking us to trust you with our tax dollars. When I consider the fact that there was little to no community involvement in this progress, in this process, before a plan was hatched in full to the public, and when I consider the fact that teachers were not prioritized in the slightest, teachers are the backbones of our schools, it's not buildings. You're asking us to trust you. As far as I can see, there's no reason for that. Thank you.
I'm assuming, because nobody else is standing there, that this public comment section is over, so before we move on to vote on the question, I just wanted to cover a few things that were brought up that, at the moment, we do have answers to, and then also to direct everyone to the referendum roundtables that we will start having next week to gain more information about this proposal. So the first thing was the excellent point brought up about Spanish translation. We were finally able to get the PowerPoint, which, as Ms. Schneider noted, was fairly complicated to translate, translated, and that should be on the website. Now, we will get it up as soon as possible, as well as getting paper copies of things out to folks, because that's an excellent point as well. I'm going to ask Ms. Coleman to help me out with the second point that I wanted to address, because she is going to have, she has been doing all of the research on it. We, as a board, are not experts in finance, we don't claim to be, so when those sorts of questions come up, we let her take the lead, because that's what we hired her to do. So, it's been mentioned a couple of times that there isn't, the potential that there was an option to go out for a referendum, not for facilities, but for other budgetary things. And I want to first be clear that, at no point, was Ms. Coleman misleading the public when she said that we had been denied those requests, when she went to the county office to ask for that exact thing. We were denied multiple times, am I correct? You asked two or three different times?
Yes.
Yes. So, we wish we could have done that. That was something that was on the table, and we were denied. She has been looking extensively into the case in Robbinsville that Ms. Betran and Mr. Carlson were referencing and has messaged back and forth with them quite a bit. We appreciate their advocacy. Ms. Coleman, could you just explain a little bit about why that is, while it's wonderful that that school district got to do that, why we're pausing and making sure we have all of our information correct?
Sure, and thank you, everybody, who emailed me that information, because I was able to speak to the superintendent in Robbinsville and the business administrator. And, it's very, listen, I do this for a living, so it's confusing, but there is a law on the books in 18A that does allow a school district to seek from the taxpayers, and I believe it's kind of the same law where they say, you know, that we use our referendum, right? You can go out four times a year and ask the taxpayers to increase your tax levy. Robbinsville used that section of law, and actually, when you read it, it doesn't say that you can raise funds for referendum, or only for capital. That's how the county office and Trenton typically applies it to school districts, because that gives you the four dates of the school year that you can go out, you know, like September, December, January, March. I think Robbinsville went out, I think, in March. So typically, when we do our budget, you know, with the 2% tax cap and any leeway I have with the 2%, they apply the School Funding Reform Act and Statute 6A to look at my request for taxes and any increase above the 2%. They don't apply 18A. Robbinsville applied this 18A. So, I reached out to the Mercer County Office of Education, just full transparent, I called them, just like, how was this possible? Because the Camden County BA, she shot me down, like, at every go, and they refused to take my call. I called Trenton, they refused to take my call. I was able to speak to the BA in Robbinsville at length, they did it. What is unknown at this time is the ramifications from Trenton to Robbinsville with them doing it, because they passed it in March and they were able to increase their tax levy in their budget that went to everybody in April. That is all factually accurate. What we don't know is what Trenton's going to do with Robbinsville next go-around, because, and from what I understand from the Camden County BA, I finally got her on the phone, she did, she verified all this information with me. We don't know what Trenton's going to do. Like, are they going to penalize Robbinsville, or is they're just going to, like, just let us do this? So this is still kind of the stuff, kind of, that we are talking about. But this law is on the books, and again, it's typically for when we have to go for a special referendum. But it doesn't say just for capital. It says at a time when the school district so deems, you know, needing the funds. So, there's conflicting laws on the books. When I send my budget to the Camden County Office of Education, who then reviews on behalf of Trenton, they're using one law, and that's what I presented to you continually. Robbinsville applied the other one to close their budget hole. Both apparently are legal. Robbinsville got their attorney involved and basically, you know, pushed the envelope as far as they could with Trenton. We're currently with the Finance Committee and the Board, we haven't ignored it, I'm looking at it, I am a little anxious about it, because I'm very conservative with everything that's going on in Trenton, but I am taking everybody's emails and I am looking at it. I sent the information also to the Board President and Haden Township, because she heads our local advocacy group, because, like, when I sent the, I sent the email to all the BAs in Camden County, like, hey, like, does anybody know? We were all like, what? Like, we, nobody really knew, that, A, this was a thing and that Trenton was kind of, Trenton didn't know what to do with it. So Trenton let it slide, I don't know how much longer they're going to, seems to be like there's a workaround, currently legal workaround right now. I don't know how long that'll currently be open. But that's kind of where I am right now, and again, it's still out there, it's still on the table, the board's talking about it, but that's, yeah, that's the research.
And also, when you and Mr. Burns did the calculations to kind of see where that would get us, the unfortunate part, in order to actually close our gap, the impact to the taxpayer we learned would be-
Sizable.
Twice what-
So, Robbinsville went out last year for four million, because their structural issue was about four million, when I was talking to the VA. That went down. Then they went back out, I believe, for two and a half. So, as I've said before in previous budget meetings, we have a few different numbers to work off of regarding our budget situation. The one is local fair share versus what I'm allowed to ask for, right? Trenton determines the local fair share, that they say, based on the value of the property in the town, and the taxes everybody pays, they think Collingswood can pay, like, twenty-three, over twenty-three million. I currently tax about a little over eighteen. So, that would be five million. So if I just said, hey, town, let's just go for our total local fair share, restore our program by five million, that's almost twelve hundred dollars to a house. That's, I've never taxed that much. So that was kind of shocking, and then I'm like, all right, well, let's just close what is in my budget as under adequacy, the under adequacy number, and that's about 3.9, and that was about six hundred dollars a house. Our average tax increase in any year is about a hundred to a hundred and forty, give or take, this year was a hundred and thirty-six. That was a big number. So I kind of took a step back and I wanted to talk to the Finance Committee. It's not that I'm not looking into it, but it's a sizable chunk, and we need to take a step back and make sure we can, as, like, it's a lot to say, yeah, let's do this, but it's a lot of, a lot of money, and it's a permanent increase in taxes, not a one-year hit, it's a permanent. So once I say to the taxpayers, and you say, yes, we're going to do this, that's six hundred or twelve hundred a house on your property every year from here on out. So that's kind of why I took a pause back, because this is not something I want to, I don't want to tax lightly. You know what I mean? I want to make sure, obviously, it's the right decision, everybody's important, it's the right dollar amount, that we feel appropriate. So that's kind of, yeah, that's where we are.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to be clear that-
Yeah, absolutely.
That we, it was something that we were looking into, and please, go forward.
As we know from this current referendum process, there's a timeline for these things, so even if we did want to do this, there are approvals that would have to happen, and we know how long those take.
Yeah, just like we have to do it here, we would have to submit a ballot question, just like the question that is formed tonight for the referendum for capital, it would be a similar format with the bond attorney, or not, excuse me, not bond attorney, but attorney would write a question that would go to the county for ballot. So the similar timeline, you know, we would have to have a board question, and it's like, I want to say sixty to ninety days ahead of the election. So like, we're doing it now for September, so yeah, we'd have to line it all up. Robbinsville went public with their question way in advance, but I believe it, I think they passed in March. Like, they got their state aid in February, it passed in March, and when they did their budget in April, like, they lined it up like a perfect key shot, like they were Tiger Woods, because then they were just able to, when they did their budget in April, they just changed their tax levy based on what the taxpayers voted yes to. But yeah, timing has to line up, too, yeah.
Can I ask a clarifying question? You mentioned that initially, they went out, I think, for four million, and then that got denied, so they went back out for two million.
Yes.
Did they have to wait six years? Why?
No, that's-
I've never heard of six years.
Yeah, I don't know where that came from, that's not, that's not true.
So if this doesn't pass?
We don't need to wait six years to go back out for a referendum.
No, you can just keep going back out, correct. I don't know where that six years, I've had, people have emailed me from town saying, is this true about six years? I have no idea where that came from. I guess, cyber space, but there's no six years.
We can only go out four times a year to ask the question, but there's no, like, once this doesn't pass, you have to wait a certain amount of time.
Okay, those were, those were the two things that I wanted to mention, as well as, next Tuesday, the 24th, at seven?
Twenty-third.
Next Tuesday, the 23rd, at 7:00 PM. At the Community Center is our first referendum roundtable. The topic is inclusion, and we'll be talking, and answering, not talking, answering questions, similar to when we did board table, board roundtable discussions in the fall and spring, fall and winter, excuse me, that it's meant to be a conversation unlike what we can do here. So please join us. We will be sending out either this evening or tomorrow morning, I've kind of lost track of that, all of the other dates for the various topics and opportunities to have more of those conversations. So, moving on to Section 3, the bond referendum. There is only one item, it is 3.01, the resolution that authorizes the submission of the bond proposal question to the state. So I need a motion to approve item 3.01.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments from board members? Roll call, please.
Mr. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mrs. Maya?
No.
Mrs. Severino?
Yes.
Mrs. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Sheridan, Celia?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Caden? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. McCulsey, I had you lined out, so I thought you were not going to be here tonight, sorry.
Uh, no.
And Mrs. Caden?
Yes. Section 4 is our second opportunity for public comment. This one is for items listed on or not on the agenda, so it is for anything. Same idea as the last time remains, also, I'll just do a brief one this time. The public is reminded that attempts to resolve all concerns and complaints should first go through appropriate staff members or administrators. We will be actively listening, taking notes, and if any appropriate clarifying comments need to be made at the end of the section, we will do so. In fairness to all who wish to speak, there's a three-minute time limit. You've heard Ms. Coleman's timer go off, so you'll be instructed when it's time to stop. Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Amy, and I reside at 25 Ardmore Terrace in Collingswood.
They can hear you at home, too.
Okay.
Don't be nervous.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Again, my name is Amy, and I am a rising junior. I am the voice of the Collingswood Panther Marching Band. To start off, I would like to make it clear that all of us speaking here tonight understand that everyone involved wants what is best for Collingswood and its students, but where we differ is in what that actually looks like in practical terms. But we acknowledge and appreciate the plethora of factors that contribute to decisions made about the programs within the school. That being said, the art and music departments have taken arguably the greatest hits in the past few years, the most recent being the resignation of marching band director, Ms. Ludwig. So let's take a moment to reminisce about the Collingswood Band Program over the past few years. First, our director, Mr. Lurch, passes, but we don't get a replacement. Instead, that money, you take that money and you give more responsibilities to Ms. Ludwig, but I don't think that is what Mr. Lurch would have wanted. Second, after giving all those responsibilities to Ms. Ludwig, she then had the role of being a band teacher in every- she then had the role of being a band teacher in every elementary school, the middle school and the high school. Also, we obviously can't forget about the added responsibility of being the director of our band. Would any of you want that workload? Third, we are now faced with the real probability of not having a season this year because the workload was too much for Ms. Ludwig to handle again, which may I add is completely understandable. And honestly, I don't know how she did it for an entire year. So do you really want to have a school with no musical spirit, which includes having no marching band at football games, home and away, therefore showing a negative image to the public about the lack of musical spirit we have here as a school? How about we are a school with a strong music program that numerous studies have shown helps to increase graduation rates, decrease fighting, which we all know needs to happen here at Collingswood High School, and promotes higher standardized test scores? Also, I would like to mention that there is a lot of interest in our program. We have gained around fifteen new members this season. And due to that increase, we have even moved up a class in our competition division. So with those numbers, maybe we can win another state championship trophy. That is what happened my first year. And you know what else happened my first year? Finding a sense of belonging. Think about the first time you felt that. Do you want to take that away from somebody else? But do you know what else happened? Or do you know what else played a crucial part in that sense of belonging for me? It was the drum major of the band that year. And now I stand in front of you today as the current drum major, asking you to please fix this because we and all members deserve to give their senior speeches at the front of the band room underneath our Mr. Lurch sign. Don't you see, marching band isn't just an extracurricular activity, but is, but it is a family. And we don't want our family to be torn apart. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Regan Burke, six Crestmont Terrace. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Regan Burke and I am the voice of the Collingswood Panther Marching Band. The marching band's unique combination of so many brilliant young people will be a tragic loss to this school. The band is home to incredible musicians, talented leaders, and even some psychics. Ten months ago, band parent Becky Mercurio stood before you and predicted the future. She told you that, quote, "It is not inconceivable that the current approach," leaving the music department understaffed, "could be the beginning of the end of the marching band program," end quote. Well, here we are. The marching band program is over for the foreseeable future. You were told on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, that this would happen and yet failed to support your music department when they told you exactly what they needed. An understaffed music department can be detrimental to a district's performance. Enhanced academic success is due to music education is a well-documented phenomenon. The National Federation of State High School Associations reports that making music is one of the richest and deepest brain activities that humans perform and that young musicians have stronger language and reading skills than non-musicians. The American Psychological Association points to research performed in British Columbia that identifies a clear positive correlation between music education and achievement on standardized tests across all subjects with a survey population of one hundred and twelve thousand students. The academic benefits of a strong music program, though mighty, pale in comparison to the social emotional rewards. The marching band specifically is iconic to the high school experience. Who, without a marching band, who will cheer on the football team? Who will usher them in with the national anthem? And who will represent Collingswood at town parades? On a more personal note, I cannot overstate the importance of this program to my own life and academic career. As a rising senior applying to extremely competitive schools, as a straight A student who has been awarded and acknowledged by the College Board for both my SAT and AP scores, and as someone whom this school has recognized for achievement and aptitude in leadership, my college application rests very heavily upon my leadership in this band. By allowing the Collingswood Panther Marching Band to die, you are robbing me and the students who stand with me of our futures. Thank you and hear our voice.
Laura Powell-Galloway, fifty-six Kendall, Oakland. I'm the Secretary of the Marching Band Boosters. Last night, our band family was left without a director for the second time in two years. The first time was when Joe Lurch suddenly passed away. Ms. Ludwig stepped up to direct our kids through the remainder of the season while also juggling a larger workload during the school day. The band parents came to board meetings to express the need to fill the position for a music teacher that Joe's passing had left vacant. Those requests and pleas fell on deaf ears. The second time our band was left searching for a band director came last night when Lori told us she had to make the difficult decision to step away from her marching band duties. She apologized to us, the parents and students sitting in that band room as we were once again facing an uncertain future with our children and our band family. I bring it back to last year on August sixteenth at a band booster meeting to discuss the state of the music department and our teachers. That meeting had a few guests that I see sitting here before me tonight, including the absent superintendent, Board President, and Beth Ann. We heard them tell us that numbers weren't there to justify hiring another teacher, but they swore that it was not their intention to see the marching band program or any other music program fail. Dr. McDowell stated once more, if it's good for the kids, it's good for me. He assured us a lot could change in the coming months and years. Another band booster meeting to note would be back on October tenth when a few other people that sit before us tonight came to our meeting to discuss their views on the state of the music program and the need for proper staffing. Roger, Matt, and Sarah spoke about the importance of music and arts in our school. Sarah even mentioned the meeting she had with Ms. Intricasso to better understand how understaffed the music department had become. They assured us they would do everything they could have elected to help the current situation of overcrowded music lessons and teacher burnout as a result of it. They said, we want to see change. Well, here we are, almost a year later, and they were all right. A lot could change. We're now facing a school year with no marching band, no competitions to attend, no pep band at football games. A lot can change. But now I realize that that can be a threat as much as a promise for good things to come. And please, don't even dare try to bring up the fact that Ms. Ludwig voluntarily resigned from her position as the marching band director. She may have stepped down, but there was nothing voluntary about it. She was told she would once again be handling music instruction ranging from elementary through high school. She was forced to make an impossible decision to leave her band family so she could remain healthy and present for her own family at home. She may have been the one to apologize to us last night, but it is all of you that should be apologizing to her.
Hello, my name is Harper Allendorfer and I live at six-two-nine Beddylwood Avenue. I recently graduated from Collingswood and I was the captain of the color guard this past year. I've been in color guards since sixth grade. And I'm often quoted as that, I've been said, been saying a lot that color guard and marching band is the greatest thing that I've ever done and the best decision I ever made. And for a large part of my experience, the band director, Mr. Lurch, was a very important role model to me and basically every other student that I knew. And when he passed away last year, Ms. Ludwig took over as director. And for that, I'm forever grateful because she kept the program that made me who I am running. And I'm gonna cry because I'm a big crybaby, so sorry about that. But last night, my best friend and the current color guard captain, Regan Burke, called me and told me that, about the situation that Ms. Ludwig is facing. And it broke my heart because not only for the kids that I, in my band and in my guard, who I've watched grown up and I've seen improve and I've been so proud of, but also for Ms. Ludwig herself because I knew that it meant a lot to her to basically, to lead us and to teach us. And I know that it probably was a very difficult decision for her to make. But overworking an educator as talented and valuable as her is a mistake that I do urge this Board to undo. And I know that it is not your, that it's not the decision that you want to make either. That it's the position you've been put in with a, with a major budget cuts from the state and from other things, like, it's, I know it's not like you want to put this on her. But I, I have seen recently in this year, teachers of mine, especially music teachers, leaving because they feel that they don't have the ability to continue when they are overworked and stretched too, far too thin. And this marching band has been a staple in my life and so many people's lives. It's been my home for the last five years. And it, it's very hard to think that it might not continue to bring joy to people. So I, I do hope that you consider to, really to hire someone to help Ms. Ludwig and to keep the marching band going because it's something that means so much to me and to like everyone behind me, so. Sorry for going. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Tanyer. Usually I speak here as a twenty-plus-year teacher in the district. I'm standing here right now as a band mom. Both of my sons went through the program and they came to this district with me. The Board generously allowed us to bring our students with us, to our children with us. The year my oldest son graduated, there was five other parents giving their kids diplomas because we were all bringing our kids here. This year, I was the only one. No one's doing it anymore. And they're not doing it because you're taking away the things that made Collingswood great. The band is something that allows students who are lost, particularly in this post-COVID world, to find a connection that is real. Lori Ludwig stepped into a situation that was a nightmare. Joe Lurch had been everything to these children. And Lori stood up and she said, I'm not gonna let this fall apart. And I have children at home, but I'm gonna come in early and I'm gonna stay late. And instead of this Board helping her, you punished her by saying, yeah, thanks for that, but now you're gonna be responsible for all of the music instruction from K through twelve. My youngest son, he did not come back from COVID well. And there are often days when the only thing that got him here was banned. Those practices were the only time he came to school with joy. During the school day, he thought it was a prison. Those competitions that literally Lori spent all day at were the things that make these kids feel alive. And that's what we need to protect. Buildings are great. Philosophy is great. But if our kids do not find a place where they can connect and if you are chasing out the teachers who are trying to create that place, no building is gonna fix the problem. Last thing, last thing. Last thing, and this actually goes back to the thing before I know I'm supposed to do it. You were able to send us a message via text about the band teacher. Why couldn't you do that about this board meeting? Why can't you send out the Spanish? Why can't you send out the Spanish PowerPoint via this text thing? You, you're already paying for it. We have to talk to each other and we can't just nod. If somebody had told this, told me this was a problem a month ago, I would have said, hey, we're already paying for this program. Listen to us, listen to them. Because this is where they live. Don't make it someplace they want to leave. Thank you.
My name's Art Mercurio, five sixteen Lincoln Avenue. Standing up here tonight mostly because I'm mad as hell about what is being done to our music department. And my heart rate on my watch has proved it over the last couple hours sitting here watching everybody else get up here and speak. But it's clearly no secret that we aren't alone. All you need to do is watch these meetings and see countless people stand right here and talk about how negative an effect your misguided priorities are having on the kids in this district. While there are many of you on the Board that are involved in decision-making, unfortunately, this is directed primarily at Dr. McDowell, who conveniently chose not to be here this evening. As a superintendent, the buck stops with him in more ways than one, apparently. I don't at all deny envy the position that you're in and understand the financial challenges that drive these decisions are real. But this is your job to figure out and you need to do better. Amidst all the bean counting and number crunching, zero value is being placed on the intangibles our amazing teachers bring or the overall corrosive effect this exodus is having on our school system. We're losing good teachers that genuinely care. They're not easily replaced and will leave a giant hole where you're about to put your next Band-Aid. As far as the music program, it's one thing to try and compete with hand-me-down instruments and shoestring budgets. But what has been done to the staff and kids following the loss of a beloved teacher in the department is manipulative and borderline unethical. The actions and positions taken by this administration show a clear lack of understanding of the program and what it takes to support it. You're effectively strangling it from the ground up and eventually numbers will dwindle to the point that it becomes another easy slash on your budget sheet. If you look up from the laptops once in a while, you'd see an amazing group of kids here. Many of whom, they have grown leaps and bounds thanks to this tireless dedication of the teachers in this department that care. As for numbers, maybe you should have been in the room to see, to see how many kids were heartbroken as a result of your callous decisions. These kids are more than just a head count. I've lived in this town for forty years and I'm a third-generation alumni, alumni of this school and band. The town thrives on the arts, yet we're snuffing them out in our schools. If this is the best we can do, I don't really think Collingswood is where I want to be anymore, any longer. Figure it out.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. My name is Desmond Whitaker and I live at one-eighteen East Madison Ave. I joined marching band at the beginning of seventh grade and it was such a good experience. I learned so much from Mr. Lurch and Ms. Ludwig. I know you'll learn a number of accounts tonight on how meaningful marching band is to students and I stand by all of them. But I want to take my time on the mic to go in a slightly different direction. In addition to concert band and marching band, I am also a member of choir and theater. I have spent time with every member of our music department in some capacity and I can tell you, they are an incredibly hard-working group of teachers. Each one of them teaches classes all day and they also run the middle school and high school theater departments, the Madrigals Choir, the fourth and fifth grade after-school band, the Sentatonics Choir, and of course, marching band, indoor percussion, and color guard. Apologies if I forgot something. They do so much, it's hard to keep track. Enrollment in each of these activities expands yearly and yet their staff has not been expanded to meet the growing needs of our music students. Not one of our music teachers clocks out and goes home at three o'clock. Marching band is a huge asset to our school culture and our community and it is also a really big job that requires a lot of specific experience and expertise. We were lucky to have Ms. Ludwig up to the task, but she cannot continue to take on the enormity of marching band and all the middle school, high school band classes without someone being hired to take over her elementary school classes. You need to hire a full-time music teacher to support the current staff, not just a marching band director. I encourage the Board to prioritize our music department and not let us lose our band. Mr. Lurch, we will fight for your legacy. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, I'm Braden McCulsey and I live at one-two-four East Net Ave. I would like to say that the marching band community was like a family. We were all together and friends and everyone would work hard to achieve our goals. When Mr. Lurch passed, Mrs. Ludwig had to work extremely hard. For example, she would have to work, to be with the marching band for thirteen hours days on weekends, giving up her time that she could be spending with her family for us. She had to go straight from the elementary schools to the middle and high school. She kept trying so hard to make everything work out and now she has no other choice but, but to resign from marching band and let all these people down and it's not even her fault. The fact that she had to work three separate jobs, elementary school, middle slash high school, and marching band is, uh, is completely unreasonable. Nobody in this school district works as hard as she does and yet one extra music teacher can't be hired to lessen how much responsibility and stress she had on her shoulders. It is very sad to see the program that's able to get me back on my feet when I was alone gets shut down. It leaves all of us heartbroken. We need to keep the things like this from happening before we lose everything Collingswood to stand for.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Corey Nugent. I am the voice of the Collingswood Panther Marching Band. Joining color guard this year has been an incredible journey for me. As a first-year member, I was just both excited and nervous about what lay ahead. From the moment I picked up my saber and flag, starting to practice drop spins, I knew I was embarking on something really special. Learning drop spins and other techniques was challenging, I admit. Struggling with the movements felt a bit out of place, however, these challenges became opportunities of growth, which could be useful for everyone here. Through perseverance and practice, I began to improve and more importantly, I started to build friendships and bonds with my fellow color guard members. And what I began to group, what is a group of strangers that now become my family. Interacting with others and trying to fit in was a huge hurdle, but the supportive environment of the color guard has helped me overcome this significantly. The connections I've made have been invaluable and they have made me feel welcome and included. My future goals in color guard are to make this family proud that I call family and to continue growing as both a performer and a person. Participating in this sport has brought me intense happiness Participating in this sport has brought me intense happiness and motivated me to excel in school and everything I do. It has given me a sense of purpose and drive that I carry with me every day. In conclusion, color guard has not only taught me new skills, but has also provided me with a supportive community that I can cherish. It has become an essential part of my life, and I'm so grateful for every moment I spend with them. I hope by sharing my story, others will understand the importance of this program and not take it away. So please, don't rob me of my family and our dreams of the future. Thank you.
Becky Mercurio, 524 King Ave, Collingswood. For the second time in less than two years, our marching band has lost an incredible director. More heartbreak for our kids. Another hit to a school system already under siege. As the parent of a marching band member and a CHS marching band alum, I am heartbroken and I am angry. Since Mr. Lurch's passing, parents and music teachers have pleaded for a replacement to fill the very real space that Joe left. Time and time again, we have been told that the numbers don't support hiring a replacement, and we have been reassured by Dr. McDowell that no programs will be cut, that he and the school administration understand the value of music to a young person's education. Our music teachers have rallied time and time again to breathe life into an undersupervised program and still provide for our kids, but it has reached a breaking point. We are now faced with the reality that CHS may have no marching band this fall. When is enough finally enough? Marching band is far more than an extracurricular. It requires a huge investment of time and heart from both staff and students. It means practices in the August heat and competitions under a cold October sky, but it also means creating something real, together, that lingers long after the echo of a drum or the dance of a flag. Marching band provides a powerful place for young people to work together, to create something beautiful. It offers a place to belong and grow, the very best of what an education should offer. Now is the time to show our students and our teachers that we see them and we believe in them. Please, finally, hire an additional music teacher to relieve the pressures that caused Lori's heartbreaking resignation as director. Please add that support before our program suffers another loss. Please honor the students gathered here tonight and save our music program in Collingswood. Thank you.
Hello, Michael Powell, 17 Progress. I just want to remind the community and the board that a few of you, Mr. Chu, Mr. Craig, and Ms. Sherman, you reiterated during your campaign that you support the arts, you support the music. Clearly, I'm going to say those were lies. You stood next to this band at the farmer's market last year, took videos of them playing, posted it on your social media, your campaign social media. You got your votes, where's our support now? Your campaign slogan was "Community Equity Progress." Congratulations, you failed on all three. Mr. Craig, in a New Jersey Pen article, you said, quote, "To provide a suburb educational experience, we as education leaders must always center what is best for kids academically, physically, socially, and emotionally." How's this look socially and emotionally? Mr. Chu, same article. Quote, "Our budgetary choices should not be dictated by tradition, but rather should be justified by student need." Is this needy enough for you? There's a lot of need here tonight. I've been to these meetings, I've seen the teachers speak. I don't know what the board's agenda is, doesn't make sense to me, but I do know that when this public portion is done, most likely the president is going to make some statement blaming the teachers, that they have the job posting, some other excuses, that you know are lies, community knows are lies. You've all failed at your jobs, so please do better. We should be getting dressed up like this to cheer on these kids, not to save this band. Thank you.
I'm Linda Wazakowski, I reside at 25 Ardmore Terrace in Collingswood. I'm also the band booster vice president. To say that I am devastated by the events of the past 24 hours is an understatement. And one of the worst parts about this whole situation is that we told you this would happen. We told you, and you minimized our concerns, branding us as alarmists who just didn't understand. Either that, or you simply worked to placate us with empty promises and political platitudes. Well, here we are, facing the exact situation that we feared, with the very real possibility that there will be no marching band this year. So now I say, it is you who do not understand. You do not understand what is truly involved in quality music education. You don't understand the demands it places on the teachers, the value it has for our children, and the positive ripple effects that involvement in the arts affords. I will be forever grateful to Lori Ludwig, the music department at CHS, and the band staff volunteers for the way that they pulled together to support our community after Joe passed away. This past school year, Lori continued with what can only be deemed superhuman strength and commitment to oversee the program in combination with her heavy teaching responsibilities. Your lack of support and failure to act on the multiple requests from the arts department for additional staff has created an untenable situation that has forced Lori into this unfortunate position. Let's be real, the chances of finding a suitable candidate for the very specialized position of band director at this late date, with the season already underway, is a challenge and I fear unlikely to yield the needed results. A more realistic solution would be to do what has been repeatedly asked of you by multiple interests and seek to hire an elementary music teacher. This would alleviate some of the pressure that was the cause of Lori's resignation. So many teachers have left our district recently, some of them from near the top of the pay scale, that if you truly had the will to support the arts as you claim, you could find the resources to fund such a hire. As teacher after teacher has left, as courses have been cut, and now as we face the very real possibility of losing a valued program, I sit back and ask in astonishment, what is happening? What families are going to want to move here to send their children to a school system with fewer and fewer opportunities? I am fortunate, indeed I'm privileged, because I have options to send my daughter to a different school. But there are two things that have kept us here in Collingswood. One, the marching band, which is now threatened, and two, the absolutely amazing teachers that she interacts with on a daily basis. I don't want to send my daughter to another school, I want her to stay here with the programs and teachers she loves and that love her back. But sadly, I feel I'm in a similar position with no choice. Thank you.
I'm Flora Westvillez, but you already know that, and I stand here today talking to a group who claims to be our school board. A real school board would have actually listened to what everyone in this room had to say and reconsidered the whole bond thing, and would have listened to literally everyone here claim that what they need is not new buildings, but new staff, translators, clearer transparency, literally anything else. But instead of actually listening to anyone here had to say, you went ahead with plans that you already had set in stone, regardless of what anyone here thought. And my heart goes out to all of the communities who don't have much of a voice here today, be it because of lack of translation, or the fact that every school board meeting is held here in Collingswood, where not many other people in the farther communities can reach. Because if you're willing to remove the core pillars of a majority-white school, I can only imagine what you're doing to majority-minority schools. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Mark Wazakowski. I live at 25 Ardmore Terrace, Collingswood, New Jersey. I have a letter from a concerned member of the community that was not able to make it here tonight, so I'd like to read that into the record. Dear Collingswood Board Members and Dr. McDowell, I regret I cannot be here tonight in person to speak to you directly. As a former member of the Collingswood Marching Panther Band, I would like to share my support for the arts and voice my concerns on the current state of the music department. I will try to keep this succinct, as I know that certain members of the board do not respond well to emotional outcries. So here are the facts. It is clear to myself and much of the community that the music department has been understaffed for many years. The refusal to hire another music teacher after the passing of Joe Lurch was unacceptable. The refusal to listen to the needs of the music department this past year is unacceptable. You may try to twist the truth and paint the current band director, Ms. Ludwig, as a villain for resigning from all her extracurricular activities, but the fact is, she is being overworked, even without them. You have given her no choice but to step away from the activity that she and so many others love so dearly. Marching band is not only an instrumental music extracurricular activity offered by, is the only instrumental music extracurricular offered to Collingswood, and you underestimate the impact that it has on the community. When I was in high school, the band was my home, when I didn't feel safe, and my family when I felt alone. To be frank, it is the reason I am still here today. I have friends who are current members of the band, and I am concerned for where this decision puts them. Your refusal to fully staff the music department is putting current and future students at risk. You not only endangered their futures as musicians, but their well-being's today. As I am making my way into adulthood, I am becoming more aware of what is going on in our town. I am currently in college to be a teacher, but honestly, seeing the way this administration has been treating its teachers, I have been considering a switch in majors and never looking back. As a Collingswood resident for my entire life, I always imagined I'd live here with my own family one day. That being said, if the administration continues to restrict support and opportunities for students, I will be moving to a district that prioritizes its community's needs as soon as possible. I hope the voices you hear tonight will be a wake-up call. The community needs another elementary school teacher, period. Not a real estate deal. Sincerely asking for change, a concerned Collingswood alum. Thank you.
Michael Schmelzer, 790 Haddon Avenue. First of all, thank you for listening. I know you guys have a tough job, thankless job. I have a child in Guard, and as owner of a local business on road karaoke, we are a sponsor of the marching band and Guard. Art, music, theater, band, these are places for kids that may not fit in with other parts of school, with the sports culture, of the many, many sports that are funded, seemingly no problem. We lost sculpture teacher class, I'm sorry, sculpture class. The theater director recently stepped down, and now here we are with this situation. I've been reading so much about what's been happening in the schools. Of course, I have Rising Junior, so all of this has been concerning, and I'm waiting for a good, something positive. It just seems like negative, negative, negative all the time lately, and I'd like to see something positive. So we have a chance here to do something positive, so hopefully we can grab this opportunity and not turn it into another negative story. Thank you.
Adam Brown, 202 West Park Ave, Oakland. Take a little bit of a different approach. I understand each of you here is here as a volunteer. You're not getting paid for this. I honestly believe that when you all started on the board, you did it because in your hearts you wanted to make improvements to this community in a positive manner. And I still honestly believe today that you still want that. I do. When I first came into this room, I saw a lot of smiles. I saw some laughter. I don't see that right now. Some of you may be tired, some of you may have some family issues in your mind that you can't think of, but I could imagine a lot of it is because you are putting your heart and souls into something to better a community, and you're not being supported. That's what it feels like. Now let's take that and play a little game where everyone over here, you're no longer on the board. So now it's just you. So every responsibility they have, now it's on you, and we're going to double meetings. At some point, we're all going to say, "I can't do it anymore. I'm losing time with my family. This is driving, I'm stressing out too much. I really want to make change and no one's listening to me." That's where we are now. Now I know there was no yes or no vote of whether or not, you know, do we want this position? Yes, no. I know you're part of a group of a bigger system that makes decisions for this community, but you're all part of that process. You all have input into that process that could have avoided all of this. We talked about it, some speakers mentioned before, we brought this up last year. So while I don't envy your position, it is a responsibility that you guys took on that you wanted. And I know there's a lot of other people in here who had more, you know, strong statements than I had, but I have two sons in the marching band, one of them is right here, and I just wanted to show him what it looked like when adult showed up, stood up, and spoke for what they need. Thank you.
Hi, Liz Young, 158 New Jersey Avenue. My kids are too young to be involved in the marching band just yet, but my husband was a multi-year drum major for the Collingswood Marching Band, and in 2005 led the marching band to an All States Championship title under the direction of Joe Lurch, just to give you a taste of how far back the history of the excellence of this band dates. Before the board responds to people's comments by saying you are looking to hire a new band director, because I know the job posting is out there, laying that role at the feet of Mrs. Ludwig should have never been a long-term plan. Putting that posting out the day after she decides it's too much for her is not a plan. We should have been looking for a new director as soon as Joe Lurch passed away. Several of you up here are educators. You understand what it is like to take on that extra workload, especially with kids at home. This should have never been part of our long-term plan. And it's clear that we can find room in the budget to hire someone because we put it out there now. Also, I've been made aware that because of the complete lack of staffing in our music department, there are students at elementary schools, specifically I know at Tatum, who are unable to take instrument lessons because we do not have the staff to provide them to all students that want them. For a board that is built on stating equity, 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 that's not it. There are students who are being turned down for music lessons. And when you take away the music program, there's a tier of families that are going to be able to provide that to their students and alternate, to their kids in alternate pathways. And there's a tier of families that is relying on the public schools to be able to give their kids that outlet. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Andrea Haynes. I live at 248 East Night Ave. I have two kids in the district, sorry. I have two kids in the district, and I am the secretary of the CMS PTA Board and a brand-new marching band parent. And I'm here tonight to express my frustration and disappointment with the general state of things in the district. Our teachers and staff, they are the heart and soul of our schools. They deserve to work in an environment where they feel respected and valued, where they aren't set up to fail due to an impossible workload, and most importantly, they deserve to be paid fairly. It's heartbreaking that so many of the teachers and staff, our children have loved and admired, are no longer with the district. Our teachers aren't disposable. The past few years have been challenging, and our kids need consistency. Schools should be a safe place for all students and families, a place that creates a sense of stability and familiarity, even in the face of external chaos. Yet, instead of providing consistency, our district has become a revolving door, and programs that offer safe haven to so many of our children are being dismantled. As a board, you're asking the public to trust your vision for the future of our district by voting yes to the referendum. But as a community, how do we trust your future building, your future vision, when the current decisions made by both the Board of Ed and the administration cause so much chaos? Thank you.
112 West Park Ave in Collingswood. I'm going to start by thanking Ms. McColsky and Ms. Maya for voting yes to the referendum behalf. And I'm thankful for the continued and ardent support of our staff at all of our schools. I've been told by members of this board and some of your most ardent supporters now for over a year that we need to bring the temperature down. And I desperately want to bring the temperature down, but perhaps it's because it's been 100 degrees for the last week. I can't, and none of us, I believe, in this room can. We're boiling over. And I'm really speaking to those that are boiling over behind me and listening to this online, and can express something that's been expressed again by some of your most ardent supporters. supporters, which is that in order to have a revolution, sometimes things have to burn down. We have to start from scratch. And that's seemingly what is going on here. And I don't believe any of you have that intention. But I can tell you that we need a revolution and I'm asking everybody behind me and listening online to get out there and vote on September 17th and vote no. We cannot possibly support management of $30 million by the management that's gone on for these last years. And I ask you further to come out and continue to express that, everybody in this community, and do what's necessary to make the change we need to happen. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Rami Powell, 56 Kendall, and I'm going to share my personal experience in marching band. As it did for all of us, COVID took a very big toll on me and discovering marching band helped lift a weight off of my shoulders. I made memories and friendships I will carry with me forever and learned things that affect me and help me in my everyday life. As someone not only in marching band, but someone in choir, theater, and color guard, it disappoints me to see how it is going. Ms. Ludwig has been teaching me since I was in kindergarten and I have grown up with her. And to see her have to make this heartbreaking decision as a result of lack of staff was very disappointing. Please hear me and all the others who have spoken and help us keep this family alive. Thank you.
My name's Mike Pelucci and I teach here at the high school. And as you know, I'm a parent in town. I live in 357 Park Avenue. One of the things that I wanted to bring up tonight in my remarks is just the, something I've said before when I've spoken at board meetings, I care very, very much about this district. If I gave up, quit teaching and moved to California, I would still root for Collingswood. You know, I, I would, I'm always going to root for this place, for this town, for this school, for the people, because it's the people that make it what it is. And I've said this before, but we are a district of people, not policies. Policies can change and policies are very, very important, but if you don't center people first, you have situations like we have right now. Many of us in this room are parents. At some point, your kid is going to with one hand, grab a glass bowl and try to pour cereal into it and you are going to say, buddy, that's not going to work. And you're going to say, and they're going to yell at you. You say, bud, that's not going to work. And then they're going to drop the bowl and it's going to break or spill on the floor, right? That's going to happen. Everyone's been there. At some point, that's how they learn, right? I hate to say this, but it kind of feels like when we stand up here and we tell you what is going to happen and then it happens. That is what it feels like. And we articulated it, it was articulated with the band situation and I'm here to articulate it from the English department, from a mandated academic standpoint. We have an English department at the high school that is stretched to capacity. We have teachers that are being asked to teach classes with 30 kids and possibly have 150 students. That is unsustainable. And just like Ms. Ludwig had too many people on her plate to possibly do the job that she was asked to do, this is going to happen with our academic teachers as well if we continue down this road. I don't promise you, I guarantee you that we can't sustain it. And I think what needs to happen is that you just need to listen, you know? We have a lot of hotshots in this town that think they know better than the people who do this every day. And I'm here to tell you that you don't. Okay? We know what's, we know, we care, no one cares. I know you guys all care. I know everyone in this room cares. You have to listen to the people that are on the ground. That's why it's called grassroots. You start on the ground and then you build, okay? Doesn't matter what podcast you listen to or what documentary you've seen, okay? If you don't have a good relationship with the people that you are, that you are, your decisions are affecting, okay? That is what is ultimately important and that is what we are failing at. Understand that there are external circumstances that make these things difficult. I absolutely do. But we can mitigate a lot of this stuff if we centered people first before we had these, you know, abstract ideas that we're trying to put into place. So please keep that in mind because we can't go on like this. Thank you.
So many really tall people. Well, okay, Mike, that's a little, that's a little much, but okay. That'll do. Okay. Hi, Robin Hogan, president of the Collingswood Education Association, fifth grade teacher at Sharp Elementary School. First, I want to say thank you to the parents and oh my goodness, the students. So proud of everything that you have said and the courage that it takes. The courage that it takes to come up here and speak, okay? As an adult, we find it intimidating and we have our students coming up and showing us how things should be done. And so I just want to say thank you. And also, we've been having conversations all year long about our concerns about spreading staff thin, so I just want to ask you to please find a sustainable solution for how we can solve this problem. Kids aren't just numbers. Our kids are, we're growing human beings who are going to become members of this society and community and we want them to be mentally healthy and happy. And so sometimes we have to look at things other than just a policy or a number. So I'm just asking you to please look for a sustainable solution to this problem. Our kids deserve the very best. Their teachers and the staff here have been fighting for them and always will fight for them, but we need to be pulling together this as a team and find a solution that we can maintain our excellent programs for all of our kids. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lillian DeFrank. I'm from 526 Dwight Avenue. I was not planning to get up and speak tonight as I am not the best at public speaking. But I'm very proud to say that I am the assistant director of this beautiful family back here. I know you have heard from a lot of them tonight, but I wanted to come up and clarify a couple of things that have been said. It was very, very hard for me to see one of my good friends, Ms. Lori Ludwig, so overworked this year and know that I couldn't do anything to help her as I am still at school. When I found out that that was a possibility again this year, I waited to turn in my contract as assistant director because I was terrified that someone would come to me asking to take that job. Today, that happened and I was asked to take her job. I have not made any decisions, but it's most likely a no. I am not qualified and I am not prepared to take this job for her. And as much as I will do absolutely anything in my power for these students, I'm not ready for that. I know that the job posting has gone out for her replacement, but I need you all to understand that not anyone can do this job. I cannot do this alone and I can't do it with someone who doesn't know what they're doing. I need Ms. Ludwig in this position and she needs her elementary workload taken off her plate so that she can stand beside me and lead this family. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Dylan Coy, 712 Crawford Avenue. I grew up watching my sisters in the color guard and marching band. I quickly wanted to like join after them and I joined in seventh grade. I was the only middle schooler out of the high schoolers in the color guard, but I quickly felt accepted and loved. I got to be myself and I got to express who I wanted to be. And I, like, it quickly became a family for me and a place where I could be happy and like, it just, it's such a unique sport. Like, you get to play an instrument, dance and spin. And that's just so fun. And then this year I joined, I joined band class and I played trombone, which I've never done before. And I'm not the best at instruments, but Ms. Ludwig like gave me lessons and she gave everyone new to an instrument lessons, which it's so impressive after all she had to do. And she still gave time for us, which cut into her own time. And I just really appreciate her for that. And I just hope she can continue doing marching band and I hope we can continue something that I know we all love and everyone out here loves. Thank you.
I live on Stokes Ave in Collingswood. I also didn't really prepare to speak today, but I just feel compelled after hearing everybody. The, the student you, that just spoke before me, he has grown so much in this program. He is one of the strongest people I think I've ever met, honestly. He really is. And I am so proud to be a part of this. I, I teach the color guard, but I feel like they really teach me, honestly. And I also feel like I, I have kind of a unique perspective because I grew up in Voorhees and that's totally different. It's very big. We have a lot of support in the marching band and we were able to do so much. Actually, they just won everything this year. They won both indoors and outdoor. And we could do that. I mean, these kids are awesome. You, you don't know, but they are. And the staff is awesome and it is not like any place I've ever been before. It's very unique. You guys really don't know what you have here. Marching band and Eastern really gave me a place. I felt very alone. I didn't go to class a lot and by doing that, my gym teacher introduced me to color guard my junior year. And I'm just so happy that I did that because my life has totally changed for the better since then. And now I'm going to school for physical therapy and I, I want to use that to help the kids and like understand their bodies and movement and I don't know. I've, I like to spin things. I spin everything and I want, I want to teach them how to do that too. So I don't know. If you guys have the power to do anything, I think it would be beneficial. And I also know that one of our graduating seniors who also spoke Harper, she would love to step up and teach as well after, you know, I have to get into school and everything and I might not have as much time, but she would be an amazing instructor and you cannot take that away from her. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anthony, 917 Stokes Avenue. For the past year, I have had the pleasure of being the percussion caption, caption head of percussion for the marching band. And let me tell you, the kids at this school are incredible. But what I have seen while being a volunteer at this school, over 50% of our staff are volunteers, by the way. I want to echo the sentiment that art material made of shoestring budgets. Through locally put on rock music shows, I have been able to fund over $2,000 worth of equipment for this program. This program goes way deeper than just Lori's workload. So you just put out a listing for a new band director, but a new band director doesn't solve the problem. We don't want a new director. We want Lori. We want our friend, our fearless Lori. And what happens when you guys replace the band director? Then does Lori still have to maintain that double duty workload? But what happens if you actually fill that full-time position? The arts are still declining in this town. They're still massively underfunded. We wanted to buy cheap costumes from Amazon for indoor this year. The kids ended up getting second place in indoor percussion, which hasn't helped us before COVID. All is right because they were given the resources that they need. That's because of volunteers who have stepped up to teach the kids who live in this town. And as somebody who lives here now, but wants to be a parent soon and wants to continue to live in this town, I cannot justify living here if the arts, music, languages like Latin and German are not being supported adequately. Even English. The language that we all speak, but it goes deeper than that. And I know that doing these things might sound like just people, we've heard the terms alarmist, equality, equity. Getting the ball in the right direction will increase trust in what you guys are doing. Because at the end of the day, people on this side want to see their concerns really being solved. And I know that your job is often thankless and it's often difficult, but small steps can really get the ball rolling. And if you find that if you work with this community, not only in the arts program, you know, something that will affect teachers and your students instead of buildings, it will greatly improve the livelihood of everybody who lives here and truly make this where we want to be. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Haley. I live at 78 Corn Hill. And I am the current, or was the current color guard director for the Collingswood Panther marching band. And I too have not turned in my contract renewal when I found out that Lori Ludwig was going to be put under the same amount of stress and tension as she was last year. Something that Mr. Lurch used to say was those who stay will be champions. And that was what he lived by. It was in his room, it was everywhere. And it's really hard for people to stay when they weren't given an option. These kids have put their blood, sweat and tears, literally, into every performance, every practice, everything. They have learned skills like resilience and trying something even if it scares you horribly. They've learned how life works, how unfair it can be and how fun it can be. And all of the great things that come with something that is a team. And marching band and color guard, sure, they're just an extracurricular, but they're something that spurs into something much bigger. Those are the same kids that grow up and realize they want to go into fashion like me. Or they're the same kids that realize from teaching someone how to spin that they want to be a teacher. These are roots to a tree that grow out and out and out. Lori Ludwig is the most kind, dedicated person I have ever met. I met her kids, her husband, we spent nights at their house writing drill, which is the little people who move on the field. We spent hours and hours while her kids were nagging at her husband and she stayed with us and we finished insane projects in crazy short amount of time. I watched as she had to make a hard decision last year when all the stress that had been put on her ended up putting her husband in the hospital by connection. And she had to choose to take care of her family rather than coming with us to our championships. And it was heartbreaking because she wanted to be there for those kids more than anything, but she knew where she had to be. And that is what really kicked this off, is her realizing she has to be there for her family when she almost went through unbelievable heartbreak. It's an easy solution and I know it's hard to figure out where to find that solution of an elementary school music teacher. But a woman like Lori Ludwig shouldn't have to choose between her family and a bunch of kids on a field that she enjoys helping. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jack Wilson. I live at 922 Grant Avenue. And I'm not really a big person who talks in front of groups of people, but as a person who lived in Collingswood for my whole life and has had a family in the Collingswood marching band, and as a student in choir band and theater, I am very upset at what has happened with Ms. Ludwig having to step down from the marching band and... Just imagine if you had to work a three-hour unpaid overtime, missing out on time with your family, to be with a group of kids that has as much potential as the marching band This marching band has had to go through many hardships like the death of... This marching band has had to go through many hardships like the death of Mr. Lurch and now having to see a teacher who tru- who truly cared about a group of kids have to resign because of, because she is overworked and tired.
Hello, I'm Sienna Averett, 128 Manor Ave in Oakland. I am a small business owner of a music lesson school here in town and I am a musician and a music educator. There's a lot to say, much of which has been so beautifully said already tonight and so I'm gonna boil it down to a few main points. The last-minute job posting is a large concern when this situation was clearly overworking Ms. Ludwig and that should have only been a temporary solution in the midst of figuring out where to go after the heartbreaking loss of Mr. Lurch. This apparent afterthought for the situation seems disrespectful to the staff and to these students. I'm a musician. I know many music educators and recent master of music graduates and all of my friends and colleagues already have positions for the fall. I've watched my own private music students grow up in this band program and become bright, talented, passionate musicians. And most importantly, I've watched them find a family. I've spoken with my youngest students about their own excitement to finally have the opportunity to join this music community. And I'm not really sure what to say to them now because I don't know where their future is in this program. I chose this town for my business because of the wonderful community, but I also chose it because I plan to start a family here. I don't mean this as a threat, but it's something that is weighing so heavily on my mind. I'm not sure if I wanna start a family in a town where there is not the potential of having a role in this integral music program. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Shannon Brown, 507 Lincoln Ave. I've been a Collingswood resident for more than forty-three years. I'm a Collingswood High School alum and I was in the Color Guard in ninety-six to ninety-seven. I just wanna express my gratitude for those that have spoken tonight and those that have yet to speak. And those of you that are here sitting and listening to our grievances. I have a son that has been involved in the marching band for the past few years and a son who is eagerly awaiting to join this year. The loss of Mr. Lurch was devastating for all of the children and when Lori stepped up, it was a blessing that these children didn't ha- have to lose their love of marching band as well. I was told today that I should get more involved and he was right. So I just wanted to speak my piece and express my support for the marching band and the indoor jazz band and the Color Guard. And I hope that you will join me in getting more involved by finding an elementary school teacher in order to support Lori Ludwig so that she can continue to be the marching band director. My son loves this band. I love this band. This is his family. This is our family. Please don't take that away.
Anne Marie Latini, um, 131 Woodland Terrace in Oakland. I too did not plan on speaking. Um, God, I hate this. So I'm gonna shake my way through this because this is not my favorite thing to do. But if they can do it, and let me just say, I know I'm not supposed to face them, Collingswood Marching Band, please give yourself a round of applause because you are extraordinary. What they said, what they did, coming here, showing up, is just beyond and that just represents the program. So I'm not gonna talk about emotion. I'm not gonna talk about my son, who this program literally saved his life. That's not hyperbolic. That's the truth. But I'm not gonna talk about that. I'm not gonna talk about, you know, we know the data. We know that this is important. We know the stats. And if you need the data, I'm a data scientist. I can help you out with that. But you know that. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. You need to support the teachers. Bottom line. We need, we, this performative posting of this job, and that's what it is, is performative. We know that this is not gonna get filled. We're pretty sure that this is not gonna get filled. But then you can go home and you're gonna say later that like, the job is posted. We did our job. Sorry, guys. Shrug the shoulders and say, we tried. Good luck. See you next, you know, good luck in your future. But that's not the answer. You need to get, give the, give the teachers the support that they need for this program to continue. You talk about equity. Someone said it. It's inequitable to not have a music program. And yes, you're gonna have band class. It's not the same as an after-school activity. You're going to destroy kids' lives, period. You need to understand that. So you need to support the teachers. Hire someone at the elementary level. It's been said hundreds and hundreds of times. That's the answer. The answer's easy. You have the answer. And I'm just gonna talk a little bit about these clowns behind me. The, this, these, these group that talks so, we're, we're here. And I, and if the band, it does not exist, we're not going anywhere. We're gonna be loud. We're gonna be, we're gonna be, we're gonna, we're gonna be scared. I have a snare drum at home. We are not gonna let this, we're, we're not gonna go quietly in that good night. I promise you that. So support the band, please. I know, I know it's, you're not doing this purposely and I know it's a hard decision, but we need to do better. Thank you.
Hi, uh, Tom Melton, 530 Haddon Avenue, uh, eighteen-year resident. Uh, I really don't have skin in the game. I don't have many kids, but you know, coming here tonight, I just saw some postings on Facebook and I just wanted to see what was going on. Um, the passion that everybody has is impressive. It's obviously impacting me. Um, couple themes that, that I've taken away from this uh, tonight for the board. Um, every interaction is an opportunity. So when you speak to the parents or the children, you need to communicate. You need to listen, effective listening, and you have to have empathy. So that's about all that I have for the board, but one thing that I do wanna say is that I have a nephew in Illinois, alright? Just graduated University of Illinois. Degree in music com- composition, alright? Specifically with um classical music, which, you know, young folks, I would have never expected him to be in classical, okay? But to date, he's published two CDs. He makes his own uh videos. And I just want you to know that watching him evolve through the years, you know, these kids remind me a lot of my nephew. And I think that the gravity of what these folks are saying tonight, you really need to have that empathy and, and listen and take action accordingly. That's, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
We once again are Regan and Amy and we just wanna thank you, um, you, everyone who spoke. We wanna thank you for your dedication and your bravery and hopefully you board now understand how important this program is.
We urge you to hear our voices and prioritize our cause. Hear our voices, please, and hire a new elementary school music teacher so we can bring Ms. Ludwig home.
Hi, um, I'm not gonna talk about the same thing 'cause I know the rules. But I am gonna say that there has been a theme that I think maybe recognizing patterns is really the core of all education. You figure out this happens again and again and again. You learn from it. You change your behavior so the same thing doesn't happen. At the end of the last board meeting, I asked you a question. I said, how are we gonna staff a six, an eight-period day when we've let all these teachers go? I now know that. My AP classes are twice the size they were three years ago. That's how we're gonna staff it. So instead of Lori Ludwig and what she, I know, she was the, she was the, the spear point of what's happening to every teacher in this district. I've been here a long time. Maybe a little too long. Um, and so I just wanna beg of you that when you have an excess of new teachers teaching classes that have no guidance, because we don't have enough tenure teachers to actually be their mentors, and then you have teacher, a classes that you can't even get teachers for. So they, kids go from long-term sub, new teacher, long-term sub, new teacher, class that is twice as large as it should be. You have angry students because the teachers who know how to do the com- the community building can't do it if we have to grade twice as many essays. And if you say, well, don't assign as many essays, which is what I've been told, how do they get better? They don't, okay? So I can't do what I need to make those kids less angry. And the new teachers who aren't getting guidance are overwhelmed. They're overwhelmed and they don't even know where to start and I can't help them because I'm trying to figure out what to do with a hundred and fifty students. Honors Kids used to do two long-term research papers to get them ready for college with me. I can barely do one. And that is gonna impact how they perform and it's gonna impact how this community functions. I beg of you, the reason teachers are leaving is because they're Lori Ludwig. They can't do it. And after a while, we can't look at ourselves in the mirror any longer. Because I love what I do, but every time an administrator tells me, just do less. Okay, that is like acid on my soul. And I know that you are doing the best possible, but this is a community that has houses that are worth five hundred thousand dollars. No one is going to pay five hundred thousand dollars to buy a house in Collingswood when they have no band program, when they can go to township. Thank you, Ms. Tenure. They're just not gonna.
Hi. I'm Alexandra Guido Smith, 311 Lakeview Drive. Um, it's really nice to see all of the boosters and parents and family here to support the music program. I think they should have all the music teachers that, that they need. I think all the teachers should settle their contract, get a raise. They deserve it. All of the above. And I would like to let everybody know that you guys are here twice a month, almost every month, and it would be wonderful if we had this showing for the kids of color when they walked out, for some words about that article in the uh, in the Inquirer. My kid is coming into high school. I'm talking about a glass bowl. Should I expect that my kid has a one in five chance of getting suspended? Are we gonna talk about that? Are we gonna rally for those kids? What are they doing here? I had a kid, one of twenty-six, in my kid's kindergarten class. Look at my brown daughter and tell her, you can't use that color. Black is bad. Brown is bad. We have no guidance counselor. There's no guidance counselor. I can't move her to another class. There's no other class in the building! Where is she supposed to go? Should I not have led her to another building? Because there's no other teacher? There's no other place to put her? Is that fair? Is that equitable? Put these kids together. This is long overdue. And speaking of long overdue, it was interesting to hear the former superintendent chiming in. Because over the past week, we've reached an important turning point, one where we finally acknowledged across the board that the current model of five small elementary schools is absolutely working for nobody. What saddens me more is that it took here, hearing this from a white former superintendent that so of us needed, believed it and agreed that action is needed. What saddens me more is that we see community members acknowledge this problem and then clearly state that they will not act on it. Collingswood has been in the news twice already this year for racist acts at our schools. Students of color and their parents have put themselves at risk to speak out publicly about the racism experienced at the schools from students and staff alike. Those of us paying attention at board meetings 'cause we're here all the time know that we have wide achievement gaps among our elementary students in a situation that we created. For those students that will follow through their lives affecting their chances of graduating, going to college and/or maximizing their professional potential. We cannot say this and experience this as others to do nothing. Matters of this community have a right and responsibility to question the current referendum plan, absolutely. How much will it cost? What, what is the plan for transportation? What exactly will happen with the decommissioned schools? However, I am shocked to see that so of these same people neglect to question the details or feasibility of a plan that our former superintendent referred to in a recent letter to the editor of, in the retrospect that was wildly touted. It's also, it's also worth asking why this plan wasn't enacted to have fifteen hours of that front, of the former superintendent's term? Or how is current employer's contract with this district figures into his attempt to derail our plan for equity? I hope that people pursue the answers to those questions or that the former superintendent makes an effort to show the work that he did ten, fifteen years ago, rather than once again asking a current district employee to do that work for him. Thank you for voting to put this to the people. And I would deliver within my power to make it pass because my child and my child deserves to have to go through what my kid is.
Julie Snyder, 819 McGill Ave.
I need everyone in the audience to, to remain qui- excuse me, quiet, please. And Ms. Snyder, are you speaking on a different topic?
Different top- yes, 'cause I talked in the first one. This is the second one, so I'm good, right?
Thank you.
Just me. Um, I think what feels divisive sometimes and what I do wanna make clear, um, is that, and this is something, there was an embracing race um situation and there was a Q and A and we had some board members there speaking as, you know, people, like not, not in official capacity. Um, I'm getting there. And one of the things towards the end, and this might be a little earlier precipitous, but if the referendum doesn't pass, um, I hope that there are other solutions, you know, um, and I think what was alluded to by somebody who spoke very, very well about engaging the community. So my first comment, which was about Spanish speakers, is it's not just about informing the Spanish speakers, but it's including the Spanish speakers in solving um problems, right? And I think, um, and, and all the affected communities, right? Um, so I think if the referendum didn't pass, um, that was my question towards the end was, is the Board of Ed still gonna look at other ways to, um, I'll say balance out the demographics, right? Change things um a little bit? And, um, and the answer that I heard at that moment was, no, because then the, the, the community has spoken that transportation is too big of, of an obstacle. And I wanna make it clear, I don't think that that should be the, the takeaway if the referendum didn't pass. And again, I know it's early and it's precipitous. But I would just hope that the community can hear that there's, I, I think someone spoke also really well. A lot of us recognize problems, but we might not agree on the solution. And it's, it, it can be divisive, I think, to expect everyone to see the same resol- like the same way to co- to, to solve the problem. So I think some people are very, very sure that this is the right way. I respect that. But please don't interpret disagreement with the referendum as saying that there's not an issue or not a problem. Um, and that there's not other solutions that I would hope that there would be a round table with the people at the table forming the plan rather than commenting on a plan that has already been formed.
So I just wanted to start off by saying that I echo what um many of the other adults mentioned, um, that all of the kids that spoke, all of the students that spoke are amazing. Um, I'm always blown away by uh our students when they come to speak at public comment or when they come for a presentation. And I was thinking of, my son happens to be in Germany. And I was thinking of, my son happens to be in Germany, so I'm thinking of people speaking other languages at the moment, and my experience in Europe is every time a European person is like, "My English isn't very good," and then they speak perfect English compared to the way most of us have learned a second language. And I feel that that was the case for almost every student that, for every student that came up, came up to spoke and said, "Not very comfortable speaking publicly," and then spoke incredibly eloquently, and, you know, no offense to any of the adults in the, the room, but better than many of the adults in the room. You are, you are to be commended for your advocacy, you've been taught well about what to do when you want to make sure that you see change, and I think I can speak for all of us up here when I commend you for that, and thank you for taking the time to share your experiences with us, as well as the, the parents and community members who have done the same. I'm going to turn it over, yes, thank you. Good job to the kids. I'm going to turn it over to a minute to Ms. Howell Turner, who has been working quite a bit on this particular topic, and she wanted to, to give a little bit of, of insight into next steps.
Thank you. As, as many have said, I just want to start by thanking those who shared tonight, from, and this is directly to the students, many of you who I have not had the chance to, to meet or get to know yet. Meredith Howell Turner, I'm the new Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, and I'm here tonight sitting in Dr. McDowell's typical seat, he is away with his family this week, and so I want to take a moment to respond to the students and families who spoke so eloquently and passionately tonight about the band and Color Guard. We are fully committed to identifying a plan for how we ensure the continuity of our award-winning programs, period. Since we learned, since we learned of this news on Monday night, many of us have been actively working on it over the last two days. I wish I had a concrete update to give at this time, I do not, but I want you to hear directly from, from me and from other members of our team that we, you have our, your full commitment, that we, we will come up with a long-term solution, because like several of you said, this is what our kids deserve. And then I would just lastly say, I know this forum doesn't allow for the most organic exchange and conversation, and so I shared my contact information a few weeks back with every family in the district, my email and my phone number and my cellphone number, and so if students or recent alums who spoke tonight or families want to contact me directly to ask further questions and to engage in this further, you know, I believe personally those that are closest to the problem are often closest to the solution. It's not my saying, that's someone else's smart words, but I would be interested in engaging further with folks who may have suggestions, as many were alluded to tonight, and I would be happy to have further conversations than the three minutes allows. So thank you again for those who spoke up tonight, and please stay tuned for further updates.
Thank you, Ms. Howell Turner. So with that, just a reminder again that to be on the lookout for more communication and engagement around the, the referendum proposal and the vote on September 17th, starting with next Tuesday at the Community Center, and like I said, information about all of those various sessions will be in your mail, email boxes either tonight or tomorrow morning. With that being said, can I get a motion to adjourn this evening?
Still moved.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for taking the time to speak with us tonight.